Infected by the number of video poker machines that will be allowed to be in our establishment. Currently, we have thirteen video poker machines and a jukebox. Our clientele are most part older retired people. About twenty-five years ago, our membership decided they wanted the video poker machines, a shuffleboard, pool table, and pinball machines. At first, it was slow going, but gradually, as the membership has gotten older, they lost interest in the shuffleboard, pinball, and pool. We slowly increased our amount of video poker machines. Before we put the video poker machines in, we could barely afford five cases of beer a week. The year before Illinois went smoke-free, we were a million-dollar corporation. The IRS audit is because we turned in a million-dollar corporation, and they were very happy with the fact that we made seventy thousand dollars of charitable donations that year. The year after Illinois went, became smoke-free, we lost three hundred thousand dollars in business. We've never got that back. That means the state and city lost tax revenue. There is a misconception that veterans' clubs are tax-free. This is not the case. Our tax base is around twenty-five percent. What is twenty-five percent of three hundred thousand a year? It was also stated in the news editorial that we don't pay taxes on video poker. That again is a false statement. We again pay twenty-five percent on the revenue from our video poker machines. Does the city want to lose that kind of tax revenue? I don't know. I've learned over the twenty-eight years being involved in the American Legion that no matter what you do, people are going to do what they want to, whether it is drinking, smoking, gambling, or eating at the restaurant they want to. We have members at our post that regularly take the bus from Champaign to the River Casino in Peoria. All I know is that this is something my dad wants to do. Wouldn't it be nice if he could spend that money in Urbana instead of Peoria? By IRS rules, our veterans' club is required to nominate back sixty percent of our income to charity. That's on our pull tabs. Those are legal. So far this year, we have sent over, spent over ten thousand dollars in packages to the troops in Afghanistan and Iraq. We have given out over four thousand dollars in college scholarships, thirty-eight hundred dollars to the Illinois Special Olympics, five hundred dollars to the Sea of Freedom Celebration, five hundred dollars to the Urbana Sweet Corn Festival, and the list goes on and on. In the state the economy is right now, where Illinois and the cities are in a dire need of tax revenue, why would you want to get rid of a source of income? I think this is a case of don't cut off your nose to spite your face. If you don't accept legalized video poker, where are you going to get the tax revenue to do the things that you need to do and that you will lose? So it comes down to if we get rid of these video poker machines, which we've had for years and years and years, that we're going to probably go out of business is why I say it. It's a big part of our revenue. I say it's about twenty-five percent. We do put a lot back into the community. That's what we're supposed to do, and I've talked to a lot of veterans' clubs throughout the area, Mattoon, VFWs, Elks. They're in the same position we are. We thrive on those machines. Our customers like that. That's what they do. If they don't do it in Urbana, they'll go to Peoria. They'll go to, well, Indiana doesn't have poker machines, but it's just what they do. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Bruce. Next, Eric Meyer, who is a Champaign bar owner and co-owner, couple of bars, right?
Correct. Excuse me. I think most people understand that both small business, both restaurants, bars, all of them have been somewhat ravaged throughout the last few years. Not only DUI legislation, but the smoking ban especially hurt almost everybody. We've had increased taxation associated with the current taxes on all spirits, alcohol, and what have you that just hit this September 1st, and just the general economic downturn that all of us have felt. I think there isn't a question that our industry now is in a desperate need for entertainment opportunities, and video gaming is really nothing more than entertainment. We've heard comments of people who've lost a couple hundred or three hundred dollars at a setting, but I think most of us have maybe paid three hundred dollars for possibly a Bears ticket or a hundred dollars to go to the opera, too, or maybe even sixty dollars for just a massage. Now, those types of things, maybe we wouldn't think would be something you'd want to do, but maybe other people do. Years ago, our entertainment options in the small businesses of bars and restaurants were merely just having the jukebox. That was usually pretty exciting, especially when the new ones would show up. And then it was the satellite dishes and the widescreen TVs and trivia games and video games, but everybody has those in their households today. And now that they do have those, I mean, there are few entertainment options other than the socialization of people that attend our establishments. Small businesses in our industry have truly suffered. We've reduced sales volume, job reductions, and even benefit reductions. Many small businesses recently have had to cut healthcare to many of their people. This video gaming is about jobs in our industry. It's really about building a stronger food and beverage industry throughout the state of Illinois. This may be one of the biggest opportunities in the history of Illinois. We have an industry that actually is willing to promote and share their income with the state, not only by paying taxes, but adding new jobs, which generates future tax income to everyone. Each one of these establishments is projected to produce an upwards of ten thousand dollars or more per establishment. That's a significant amount of tax revenue for the community. Furthermore, most establishments are going to end up going through an expansion by adding on to their establishments or doing some internal building and improvements of their facilities. All will increase the tax base of these facilities and in many cases, provide a greater value when you go to even sell your establishment and give some people an opportunity for retirement and futures. For some, it removes a gray area element of activity. For others, that don't participate, it's not a fact, but it's an opportunity to clean up maybe a few things in the industry and voluntarily do it at that. More importantly, this is an opportunity to fund some capital projects across our county. We're talking about Parkland College's capital project, ninety-plus million dollars of capital projects going on, of which I believe twenty-six is funded from the state. University of Illinois is in the position of major capital improvements as well, such as Lincoln Hall. We've got roads and bridges that are in desperate repair, all being funded by this. Approximately one-third of that project is being funded from video gaming. If that goes away, there's a lot of people that aren't going to be working. This is an opportunity for sixty to ninety thousand of these machines that are currently in the state of Illinois to bring them in accordance with the law and provide income to support jobs and infrastructure in our communities. There's one senator here locally, I won't quote for him, but I believe he may have sent an email, that stated contrary to some of the reports and say that you'll still have an opportunity to get your stimulus funds if you opt out. There's a lot of questions about that in the legislature right now. Many of them suggested that frankly, if a community does opt out, they probably shouldn't share in that one-third. Many questions have come up to say, where is that additional third going to come up from? Well, right now, sales tax increase and a gas tax increase are the likely options that they're currently talking about. We'd heard a little bit about opting out a little bit ago. We've had some unincorporated areas, Cook County, DuPage, which have currently opted out. Approximately two percent of the current places in the state of Illinois have actually opted out, and that's probably a dangerous thing. We often have heard about the crack cocaine of gambling that John had mentioned here earlier. I got a study right here from the government law online that, associated from Albany, that really lays out that that's not really truly the case. It's the most overused term associated with any gambling, whether it's casino or whatever that's out there. It's just not true the case. That was originally generated, associated with very high-stake gaming in Vegas, associated with high-dollar things. These game machines that we're talking about are called Class III machines. That means they operate on the absolute lowest gaming tables there are. They're there as an entertainment option, a two-dollar bet, a five-dollar maximum. And one of the reasons why the trailer bill had, that they just spoke about earlier, Anita talked about, why that trailer bill was set out there with a one-penny option was actually to lower those stakes and make it easier for people to play at a lower level. I know, when I first went to Vegas, I couldn't wait to find the penny or the nickel machines because I wanted to be able to sit there for a couple hours and not lose the seat in my pants. I did that purposely because I couldn't afford to play those high-stake games. These games that we're talking about are very unique. They're not just video poker, as you might think of a poker hand and what have you. I've seen some of these machines at some of the shows here recently, one of which involves a similar video game like you might see at home, where individuals actually got to choose which route they were taking as a mail carrier, and they picked up packages. And as they picked up each package, they got a certain amount of dollar money to them. And when they finished the cross line, depending on how much packages and what route they'd taken and how much they collected, they were awarded a certain amount of points. Well, I don't know how addictive something like that is. We'd heard about the addiction rates being extremely high, but the same study that John talks about over here, which came from the National Gaming Impact Study Commission, I mean, clearly states that really pathological gaming may be as little as one percent of the actual population. One percent. That means ninety-nine point nine percent of us aren't going to have a problem. I can assure you, even looking at myself, there are far a lot more of us that are addictive overeaters in our society than we have associated with this. And again, alcohol establishments do have situations involving alcohol out there and alcohol abuse, and we've dealt with that with our society. This bill actually put out money, and this has got to be one of the first times that the gaming industry would come out, and actually allocated money to help out addictive gamblers. I think that's frankly somewhat incredible. To try to shorten us out, this is a game that is not designed to compete with Video Lottery. It's not designed to compete with our local lotteries that we have or even the scratch-offs. You know, we're talking about two-dollar bets here as a max, and yet we got scratch-off games that eighteen-year-olds today can spend thirty dollars on, a scratch-off game. Now, I wouldn't do such a foolish thing, but some might. I mean, that's their prerogative. It's their chance to win. We have, there's a lot of opportunities, and when they talk about youth and young people in and around the campus areas adding a lot of problems to gaming, I can tell you right now, ninety-eight percent of that is online because video online, you can gamble right from your telephone today with the data phones that we have today. And the sports betting and those types of things, those are a problem area, and they're out there, and that's where most of the college kids get involved. And when we talk about college kids, I'm not sure even with the establishment I have on campus that I'll even have this machine, but I got to tell you, I want the opportunity to have it if it so be it. And it would be a highly restricted twenty-one-up entry to be associated with any of those types of games because that is the law in regards to that, and it's pretty serious. Some people have added that they might keep these games, the gray area games. Well, I assure you, on July 31st, the state of Illinois says, if that exists, your license is gone. It is a Class IV felony. We have, again, we have an operator system. It's almost like a three-tier system here, like the beer industry. It's a fantastic system because it lays things out. We have operators that are going to invest up to a hundred thousand dollars per establishment, and that's not state money. That's businessmen out there, they're investing their funds, hoping for a tradeback. And when Anita mentioned a two-year deal on the trailer bill if you didn't opt out, that was really designed primarily as people change leadership and the political ranks within mayors and what have you and boards to make sure that at least the individuals invested such a high amount by virtue of the state itself had an opportunity for a return. In closing here, I know how important this is to our industry. I know how important it is to the laborers out there that don't have jobs right now, that are able and willing and cannot wait to get out there on our roads and our bridges and start building buildings, and how important it is to start funding our state right now, who's desperately funded, underfunded, and start getting money to the University of Illinois and to Parkland College and start cleaning up our roads and do what we do. I find it very hard to imagine that anybody can vote against this.
Okay. Thank you very much, Eric. We're right on time here, and the next part of our agenda would be questions and comments from the city council and county board members. And we have two gentlemen here with microphones, so if you would like to ask a question or make a comment and you're an elected official, please raise your hand, and we will get to the public afterwards. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Alan Kurtz, District Seven, which is the district we're sitting in right now. I represent, three of us represent this district that runs from university down to Wright, Wright over to Daniel, and Daniel up, which encompasses, I would guess, almost every bar on campus. My son is a graduate of the University of Illinois, and I really have to take exception to the gentleman who said only the twenty-one-year-olds will be playing these video poker machines. Is there anyone here who knows of the U of I and bar establishments that you really believe that twenty-one-year-olds and up would be the only ones using video poker machines? One, two, three. Okay. Those are the people who are for video poker machines. Well, I have a son who went through four years, and he only became twenty-one in his fourth year. Oh, well, he was in the bars all four years. And I can tell you that in the past month, the Champaign City Police issued nearly eighty to a hundred tickets to underage drinkers in the bars. But that's just the tip of the iceberg. I know a family whose son nearly committed suicide because of gambling. That family cost them eighty-five thousand dollars for that young man to get back on the right track. If it wasn't for the fact that they had that money, which nearly bankrupted them, they would have been bankrupt. I can tell you that this is as bad as alcoholism or drug addiction. There is no difference. It's as hard to get off of gambling as it is any other addiction, and don't be fooled. Also, don't be fooled that this isn't just the beginning of opening the door to gambling. We are going to build mini casinos next to your house. They can walk around the corner and plug in up to five hundred dollars of perhaps your money because it may be the student that you have at the U of I. Wait for the bills to come into the Chicago credit cards when they see the bills for video poker. That's only a small part of this. Because of what we consider good policy, some people feel that video poker will be that. I don't believe that. I don't believe we need to have gambling. There are other options that we can have. When the gentleman says only a penny or two, he can't afford to go to the quarter machines, oh, I don't know about that. I can afford a little bit more than a penny or two, and I go to the quarter machines when I'm in Vegas. And it's not easy to walk away from those machines, and I'm not addicted. The key here is that they feel that they will reap above a billion dollars, not the small numbers you think, but a billion dollars a year from these video poker machines. And I talked with the gentleman who sponsored this bill, and that's what he feels. He feels a billion dollars. Now, where's that money coming from? It's coming out of the pockets of you or your family. Now, I'm not going to ask you to raise your hand, but how many of you know of addiction in your family, whether it be gambling, alcohol, or drugs? And please don't be fooled by the excuse that they say, "Well, they're doing it anyway. There are poker machines out there now." We know that, but we haven't got the police force or the money to be able to control illegal video poker. So I say to you now, and I'm glad that we put this study session together, I gave out a packet of information to every single one of our government officials in the three jurisdictions, and I want them to understand the ramifications of what we have here. Please read the information on both con and pro, but I can tell you from personal experience that I will vote against video poker machines being placed in our county. I'm hoping that the two other jurisdictions will follow suit because we really need to have a combined effort here. We can't have Urbana allowing it and Champaign not, we're talking about Wright Street. But what I do say is the fact that we will find other avenues to get revenue for our construction projects. Don't do it with video poker.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the elected officials?
Geraldo Rosales, District Six, Champaign County. I had a question for Bruce Brown from the American Legion. You indicated that you've made one-hundred percent profit. Are these machines tamper-proof or are you not paying out anything? I'm just kind of curious.
Those are the machines we own.
And are there any payouts currently, or that's illegal?
No. No. If you put a dollar in, we get a hundred percent profit. If it's sixty, forty, split on what we make on those machines, on the ones we don't own. So we make a hundred percent. In other words, we don't share our profits off those machines with anybody else. We make like a ten cents on a dollar.
And does the player ever win?
No. They're strictly amusement.
Amusement?
Yes.
I have heard rumors also, when I was on Champaign City Council, that there is under-the-table payoffs, and they named several bars, and I know that yours is not one of them, but I was also concerned about the payoffs and how legal that is and who is going to monitor the payoffs when that comes about.
The state will, I don't think they got the rules set on that yet, but the state will monitor all those payouts on the legalized poker machines. They will be set to payout a certain percentage. They're no different than the casinos, so whatever they set the payout at, that's what they will be paid at. And I don't know, they talked about the kiosk, that they would get a ticket, like you go to the casinos, they print your ticket out for eleven dollars, you go turn that in, you get the eleven bucks.
I have one additional question. It's just bothering me. So there's quarter machines, nickel machines, and penny, proposed to be having penny machines. All of them just reap the same gratification of gambling with no outcome whatsoever or no possibility of getting paid? I wouldn't see anybody paying a quarter when they could play the same game for a penny or a nickel.
It's just the thrill of it. There are certain people that come in there and sit all day. If they can spend twenty dollars in pennies, that's fine. Some people like to bet a little more because it shows a bigger payout. Not a payout, but it shows more points, yeah. It's like the casinos. You go there, there's people that sit there all day, they go and play on twenty bucks. So they don't worry about it. That's their twenty bucks. My dad does that. He goes and spends forty bucks and gets a free lunch and gets a bus trip. It's his day away, and that's what most people do. We have people come in there just to play them. That's their social life. That's all they do.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other elected officials want to ask a question? Okay.
I'm sorry that I missed your presentation, but I'd been at a county nursing home meeting and had to leave.
Jan Anderson is here, Madam Clerk.
I really don't have a direct question. Well, I do have one question, but I think Al has answered it for me. I know hearing by email from the unions are concerned that if we opt out, then we will not be entitled to the revenues that we would receive from the state. And I think Al has indicated you have talked about that or not.
Yes, that was discussed.
And if we opted out, we would still receive funds?
Would you like to comment?
If I may address that particular question, I think there was some incorrect information relayed here earlier. I was on a panel discussion with the legislative, one of the legislative people here who mentioned here, who sponsored the legislation, and some of our members here perhaps saw this panel discussion, and it was indicated that if you opt out, you don't lose one penny of capital construction funds. So you've got thirty-nine communities here, is my understanding, who have opted out already. They're not losing one penny in capital construction funds. All those construction jobs are still going to be there. The capital construction is underway. They're simply going to have to look for a new source of revenue for a part, to pay for a part of that. And there have been several proposals that have already been made, good proposals, and I think Anita Bedell would be more up to date on those, on what the alternatives are that are already being floated in Springfield because they know that this is bad legislation and it's failing on the video gambling, and largely because the National Commission says, "Don't do this," and if you have video gambling in local communities and convenient areas, recriminalize it. So I think, I would like to clarify that misperception that was given earlier.
Okay. I appreciate that. Then I would just like to comment that when you talk about other sources, I just think that gambling is a poor way of getting revenue to support government. It's not stable funding. I think morally, it does things to a community, serving on the mental health board, knowing how all of our social service agencies are really hurting with the cuts in funding and seeing all the needs that are out there, and if we have increased gambling within the community, we know there are going to be more addictions, need for more services. And I read through the legislation, and I'm not a lawyer and I can't speak to the legalese, but I didn't see a source of funding there that's going to help meet those social needs that would be increased, and I don't think the state has done a very good job at funding treatment for the addictions that we know are there now, and if the addictions increase, this legislation does not provide it all for that, and so I'm really concerned.
Okay. Anita Bedell would like to comment on other revenue sources to make up for a loss.
Well, this came out of Crane Chicago Business Today, and it said during the veto session, they did a workaround enacted during the last week of veto session that allows the state to borrow temporarily from the road fund, which comes from gasoline taxes, to make payments on bonds issued for capital construction projects. The money to pay off those bonds is supposed to come from several new revenue sources, but litigation to that blocks the liquor taxes, it also blocked the video gambling, and the city's opting out of video gambling through the new revenue streams and the sale of bonds in doubt. So they couldn't borrow the money to start these capital construction projects because of the uncertainty of the video gambling, how many communities would opt out, and also because of the lawsuit that was enacted, started by Mr. Wertz, who owns the Blackhawks and huge liquor company in Chicago. So he did it on the entire bill, not just the alcohol portion. So that money is in doubt already, and so that's why they had to come up with a new source to have their bonding. The video gambling is not going to pay for these construction projects. It's all going to be bonding anyway. So the state is already so much in debt, I don't know if you had in your newspaper today, but in ours, it said Illinois is one of the ten top states for not having enough money. They don't have enough money to cover over forty-seven percent of their budget. They're right behind California. So even though they pass this legislation for thirty-one billion dollars in construction projects, they don't have the money for it. It's all supposed to be borrowed.
Okay. We're still working on elected officials. We'll have the public after the elected officials. Is there another elected official who'd like to ask a question or make a comment? Okay. Seeing none, we have a gentleman over there.
My name is Larry Swope. I'm the Executive Director of the Illinois State Pipe Trades. I represent twenty-two thousand plumbers and pipe fitters in the state of Illinois. I used to be Business Manager of Local 149 here in Champaign-Urbana and Savoy, and we have approximately five hundred and fifty members there. The capital program is built. The state has gone better than, or longer than, it's not better than. The state has gone better than, or longer than, it's not better than, longer than eight years without a capital programs bill. What your capital programs pays for is the building of schools, the building of higher education schools, roads, bridges, takes care of the infrastructure, and we have had no money for ten years to do that, and if you drive up and down the roads like I do, you can tell there has been no money for it. Okay? Earlier this year, they passed a bill for capital programs.